Tim had asked me to speak about the advisory question. My first thing saying, why would you want to get rid of it? It's something that the voter has a vote, a voice. At least they feel like they're getting their say in a ballot. So I think it's important not to take voters' rights away is to keep them. I think that's very important. I know in the last charter revision, it was talked about maybe a third question. You know, too high, too low, just right. I'm not sure is, I think someone said acceptable.
Adequate.
Acceptable or adequate? I think you guys can argue about what words would fit the best. But at least the people are getting a say. Because we know not many people come to town meetings anymore. So any kind of input from the public, I think, would be very important. So as a board of finance member, I always think about, you know, how, what they're thinking. And I think having an opportunity to answer a question on a ballot is important. I don't know, really many people say, no, my taxes are too low. So I think a third question, you know, to say, hey, I think it's acceptable. And if I had the three questions and it say it went down and we had, is it acceptable? Is it too low? I think that would determine what size of a cut it would be. I've been on a board of finance early on and it was a no. And we didn't know how much to make a reduction. And I think that third question would be useful. So I would say that I did talk to Bob Anfretta about it. And we never talked about a third question, but he'd said that thing is so outdated. Because who's going to vote no too low? I know there was a push at one point to try to get the budget to add money, blah, blah, blah. But I think having three different questions would be helpful. I think you can determine that it pass, you know, what do we need to do? A little more direction with a third, a third question in there. So that's what I would say about that. I don't know, Cynthia wants to add anything?
Yeah, Cynthia of Corcoranville, 19 Elgin Avenue. So yeah, to this point, it does give the voter a voice. Now, historically, it's not like anything could ever be acted on based on that question. And if you did add something that said acceptable or adequate, the point is that it does, even if it's just a gesture, it gives the impression that they have a voice, even if nothing is done. But very few, if any, people say it's too low. And I think people might say it's acceptable if they had the third choice. I think that, I don't understand the push to get rid of it unless it takes up too much pain. But you know, your registrars are very thrifty, so they'll find a way. I just think it's important, other towns have it. And I just think, I don't see that it needs to be removed. I think it's valuable to keep it there. That's it.
Will. William Dobbs, 33 Long Island Lane, also a member of the Board of Finance. I too would like to see that non-binding question still on the ballot. Adding a third option as you're adequate or you know, a middle option between too low and too high. That would be great. But the real reason I would like to continue with this question is to keep the voters still engaged. Every elected official, we need that, you know, that contact with voters. We can't meet, you know, 3,500 voters. Yeah, unless we go out and knock on door to door for, you know, six, seven months. But when they go and have an opportunity to vote, we'll get, what about 800? How much, how much do you vote in the budget?
On the budgets, about maybe 1,400.
But we're still getting information, 1,400 people about the budget. And it's also, you know, keeping them engaged, having them feel that they have some kind of input in the direction of town. I think it's helpful building a community in town. So really, I think keeping the question, it's just a lot more than make a handful of anti-tax groups happy. It also, it keeps all the voters engaged. And in this era of voters' apathy growing and growing, growing, anything that we can do to keep these voters engaged and in constant contact with us is helpful.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, I'm just going to speak for myself. I didn't get the impression that we were considering eliminating it because it is useful information. It's how useful is it for you? The new too low, too high, does it tell you anything? I mean, that's why someone came up with the idea of acceptable or whatever word that is, you know, the three bears question.
I mean, obviously, if it went down, that's the next thing we're going to look at. You know, what happened? Now, 90% of the time, we know it's going to be too high. And that's why a third option would be very helpful. But it's definitely a tool. It's the next thing you look at. It's okay, it went down, how much did it go down by? You know, the high too low. And it says right in there, advisory question. It's non-binding, but I think it's important to look at it. It's just another piece of data, you know what I mean? So again, you know.
Here's our chance to change that data however you, I mean, of course, whatever you think is the most useful. Because too low, too high, didn't seem to be quite enough.
And that's why that third option is really important. It would be important to me to say, okay, you know, how many people said too high? And how many people said acceptable? That would dictate how big of an adjustment it has to be. Right off the bat, that would, you know, make a difference in my mind.
And right, right now, we have a situation where people vote on the main question. Yes or no for the town budget, yes or no on the school budget? And then when it comes to the advisory question, we have people that vote yes, we've got people that vote no, are too high and too low. But then we have a lot of people that don't vote at all. And so I think offering that third choice will pick what the word is.
Some other people, because they don't feel they fit in.
People will feel that, no, we think it's, you know, I don't think it's too high, I don't think it's too low. Give me other choices.
Acceptable could just also mean, even if they thought it was a little bit too high, they see the point of it, you know, like there could be that middle road where they, it's acceptable. Because, you know, that's just the way it is. I think it's very helpful. That would be very helpful.
And to the next point, if, if, if half of the people that decided to vote voted too high and then the other half voted acceptable, as, as a board of finance, that would make, it would give me less of an idea that the town was really upset with, with the budget proposed. And it would be less of a cut to me. Or, you know, that there were, that more people were satisfied than everybody was just really upset with what happened.
Yeah, they're all saying too high.
If I could answer.
Yeah, I just, hi, hi guys. I just have a question because Nick, you, you, you questioned who would vote too low. We actually saw that happen in your Fairfield. So my question is, is there a way, can we get specific numbers of people who tagged no too high or no too low? Is there a way for us to know that?
Don't you get upset?
No.
Only too low.
You can't connect the two.
Oh, I see what you mean.
I don't think.
No, no, no.
Okay, let me, let me rephrase. Can we get the numbers of people that nothing voted, but that with the advisory question answered too high or too low? Is there a way to get that information?
No, it's definitely a different question on a ballot. So you'll get something to vote for.
No, no, no.
She's talking about in the last 10 years, how many people voted no? How many people voted yes to have an idea of how close it was?
But you don't know whether they're voting yes or no.
It does, but that's, but that's the point. Do we, do we know? Is there a way to find out, no matter how people voted? People might have voted sure, but it's not, it's not high enough. We saw that, you know, in your Fairfield when things went off the rails. So is there a way to find out that we can find out how many, approximately how many voters either tagged the too high or too low? No, we, we may, it may not correlate to the actual budget vote itself. But is there a way to find that out?
Yes, yes. Yeah, every, every election, we have 500 people voted yes.
Yeah.
600 people voted no. And then, then maybe 300 said it was, was too low and 600 said it was too high.
I think what Penny's wondering is if the people, if you think it correlates, people voted yes and said too low and/or voted no and said.
No.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. It would be very helpful.
It would be helpful, but that's not, that's not the question. Because I imagine that there are people who say yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And then say it's not, it's too high or it's too low. So I'm just wondering if that information exists.
Yeah.
Let me ask the question, just so I understand. So are you asking if the information exists that you could, you could figure out if people were voting yes, but saying?
No.
No. Too high. You can't.
No, you can't.
Yeah. I would not, listen, this body can do a lot. And there's, I don't think there's anything that says that you couldn't put advisory questions on there and have four of them. No, no, too high, no, too low. Yes, too high, yes, too low. You can, if you want to really, you would know exactly.
So I'm completely okay with the budget. Where do I go?
Well, that's why, if we do the acceptables.
Yeah, you vote for the budgets. And then if you had more advisory questions, you would say, well, if you do one, you say acceptable. Or if you had four, it would be yes.
As someone who owns a bookstore, people don't read. They want yes and no, and then one, two, five.
It's complicated, but you can't.
That wasn't Penny's question, so.
But you can't find out.
It still doesn't.
But we can, I can, I can, you'll get you that information.
This is pure curiosity.
It's a good question.
Okay, thank you.
But and when you, when you compare, if you added up the yeses and the noes, then theoretically, that's the number of people who voted. Then you can add up the two highs and two lows and you'll see a gap of how many people just didn't vote at all.
Didn't bother.
Yeah.
I didn't answer.
Yeah.
But giving it acceptable.
But giving people the acceptable choice.
Then they get to park their, their opinion there.
Then I think we'll have a much better.
What is past, ask a question, I think with Allison, how useful is it? The question itself. And I, we all know what happens. There's a large portion of people voting too low. Everybody wants no taxes or.
You're saying too high?
No, there's always fewer people voting.
Correct.
But always fewer people voting too low and then more people voting too high for whatever reason. But what I've noticed over the last, how long has it been going on? 25 years?
Question.
Yeah, advisory question. It's about, you retain 25 plus 30 years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think clip out of it.
Correct, it was under.
Clip.
Yeah, I'm trying to think which year was.
Was that long?
It was already in place when I was 20 years ago.
Yeah, the split budget happened under.
Because I remember when I was, when I was a selectman, if we had that question, at least 30%. But.
Steve Ditterman was part of the chair, was chairman of the Board of Finance.
But the question itself, as it's being asked, being involved with a number of taxpayer advocates in town. You know, we all track it. And if we notice that the two lows, all of a sudden go from 30% to 40, 45%. I think Jim Bryant led a charge retirement, the vote no too low.
During Charlie Stuck's administration.
So all of a sudden you saw a big bump with the majority? No, you could see, I mean, but it meant something.
Right.
So as these numbers go every year, every year, we remember that if all of a sudden one year, you see, wait a second, the two highs went from 65% to only 55%. When you're called.
It was a gauge, yeah.
Yeah, you know, because, you know, we're not in a, you know, in an act, you know, we're looking back. We, most of us have been in that for quite a time and we understand the history. And we hear, the very number that you're, you're asking about gets recorded every year. Every budget is.
Okay.
And as it, as it fluctuates, if we are doing our job, you know, listening to the people, we're going to notice that.
Okay, I just quickly looked at some other towns that have it and there are, most of them have the third option, like acceptable. So I mean, it's.
And, and going back to the Fairfield, that was fascinating. I mean, I watched it closely. I think they wore the voters out and then that special group was able to win that question. You know, because it was less and less people coming to the polls, but it was different people coming to the polls. It was very fascinating, you know what I mean? So I hope that doesn't happen ever. But I do appreciate listening and I do appreciate everybody's time. And I know how long these boards and committees take, so and I'm leaving.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Yes. One of the things that came up, and I don't know if it's now appropriate time to ask it, was the question of, for instance, what Wilton does. If you have below a certain population percentage voting, it automatically passes.
You shouldn't ask me that question.
Well, because it's become a business issue.
And I want to say, because everybody had, and again, I don't even know how long people hold for, but say the polls are just 12 hours. Every citizen in this town had their right to go to the polls. And if people chose not to go, you can't throw those other people that came out to vote, their vote away. Because that's really what you do.
That's what they're doing.
You're saying, oh, because like, we only got 10%. Throw them away and pass the budget.
Well, you know, I wanted to just hear what your thoughts were on that.
You knew what I was going to say, Allison.
I did, but I needed it kind of, I needed to hear it. I think other people might have liked to hear it too.
I think.
I don't think it's necessarily for us, but I, I do think as you move away from a town meeting form of government, that may solve that problem. Or, I mean, I'm talking 20 years down.
Of course.
Yeah, I hope I'll be dead by then.
Yeah, it's about smaller governments, giving the people the choice and don't take their rights away.
My concern was not enough people were, were.
And that's, and I talk to Dr. Carter about that all the time. She said, you need to do a better job educating your people. She says, I can't, I can't, I can't do anymore. Isn't that crazy? You know, I say this story to anybody who will listen to me, and I think you're listening to me. We did a $93 million budget and there was no one in these chairs last year. But I went home and got on Justin Said, Justin Said at Facebook. 94 people were talking about dog shit on the football field. Isn't that insulting? But, but isn't, isn't that one of the reasons that you look at that what's happened? They were a representative democracy at every level of our government, pretty much. And, and a lot of towns, a lot of cities have representative democracy. This, in this case, you can have a very small group of people basically undermining exactly all the work the board of finances put in.
But everybody in the town has the right.
I understand.
You know, so you're taking rights away and that.
It's a dilemma though.
And you can say that about any taxpayer advocacy group that was there going against town or whatever.
Well, you can, and you could take that same scenario and say, instead of saying, if less than 15% vote, then it's automatically approved. You could say, if less than 15% vote, it's automatically denied.
Until you get 15%.
Until you get 15% to show up.
Why don't you say, we're going to do this over again? Hey, is anybody listening?
It's punishing the 15%.
You can't punish the 15%.
Well, that would be economic.
So it's one of the things that we're all forgetting. What about in Clinton? There's been a number of times where I've seen elections here, Bethel, I was in a primary. And I think day after our case. And must say, that's my horse, I still love him.
I won Bethel though. Good point, Will, thanks.
But, but the numbers were a lot lower than in, like, ready, they were a lot lower than we were expecting. And I know West was a lot lower than we were expecting. Other towns, which didn't fare so poorly as far as knocked down trees, they did well. Also, here in Bethel, you had one election between Cleary and Nick Bacher. The saving that happened right before that, it was devastating. Everyone was a week for it. And a lot of people complained that they couldn't get to the polls or they have problems. I remember, yeah, Elizabeth told me, I'm like.
Now we have early voting.
We have early votes. I was just going to say, my vacation makes difference.
For the referendum, the referendum's in April, so we should be.
She should be, yeah, mother nature.
But there's no early, there's no early voting.
No. Again, thanks for your time, everybody. We do appreciate it. It's not easy. Bring in your listener, nursing home. You gotta get her back, seriously, or go to the back door.
All right, Mary, do we have any correspondence?
No, you don't.
Okay, so then, so then we'll take a motion for approval of the regular meeting minutes from February 5th, 2025. Okay, I've got some discussion on that. In the, on the second page, we have a list of things that we talked about. On a couple of them, you said consensus was no. And I think we ought to just kind of continue around with all of those. So the first one, timeframes for appointments to fill vacancies, that was a consensus yes.
Okay.
Conform language of 2-5A, just.
What's second page, Mr. Chair?
Second page of minutes.
Right, Mary usually brings copies of the minutes. I didn't, I didn't, none of us copied agendas or minutes because I didn't know to do that. I usually.
Tim, where are we? Because I have it built up on my computer.
Okay, second page of the minutes.
Okay, okay.
So second page of the minutes, talk about the thing we reviewed and discussed. And so timeframe for appointments to fill vacancies, I believe that was a yes. And I think Nick, you've dealt with that, right? So then conform language of 2-5A to C7, officials who cease to be elected, electors. And that was a consensus yes.
Correct.
You got that? Okay, then the third bullet, C6-4C, special town meeting for sale, purchase of real property. That was a consensus no. Conform referendum timeframe, C6-3B1 to C6-5E. That was a consensus yes, right? Got that?
But did you have the, the one on the town, to sell a capital item as a no consensus?
The appraisal?
Yeah.
I, I, I put in my tracker note for the.
No, yeah, so that was a no. And then, and then constables, that bullet was a consensus, it already says consensus was no. And then the last one, housing authority, we should just say consensus no on that.
That's consistent with what I.
Yeah.
Is that what the minutes reflect, Tim? Is that what you're saying, the minutes didn't reflect?
No, the minutes don't, don't, it, it says what we talked about, but didn't say what we did.
Oh.
Except for the constables.
Okay, so then if Alice, if Alice made the motion for the minutes, I'm not sure if she's wrong to amend them or not.
Well, well, go ahead.
Can, can you just clarify something? The housing authority, I thought it was a separate entity for the town, so.
Oh, no, no, the consensus is no. In other words, don't add it to the charter.
Oh, okay, understood. All right, thank you.
So, so what, so what?
So all the, all these are charter changes?
Yes.
Got it.
Consensus, yeah, yea or nay?
So for example, constable, should the constables be added to the charter? And the consensus was no.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Alice, you made the motion, you want amended to?
To, to reflect the amendments that we've just discussed.
Second.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Do we recognize that Joan is virtually?
And Joan is.
I'm here from Florida.
We can see you. Okay, then there was one more. One more thing that I was proposing, I'm going to see where I put that. Every year after the annual town meeting, the board of selectmen have to have a special meeting to set the hours of the, of the referendum.
Right, it's usually done as a motion at the end.
Yeah, but it's. Yeah, yeah, the. Okay.
And did you write those when you were?
I did. I was having trouble getting my computer up and going there. That's right. So, yeah, so after each, when the town meeting adjourns to the referendum, then the board of selectmen have a special meeting to set the hours of the referendum. The reason being, the state statute that creates, the referendum dictates, shows that the voting hours have to be from noon until 8:00 PM. And then towns can expand it, as we've been doing for many years, be 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If we simply put this in the charter, the board of selectmen wouldn't have to do this every year. And Newtown currently has language in there to, to establish this. Because one year they forgot to set the hours and they discovered, fortunately, they discovered it before the, the actual referendum date. But they had to cancel the referendum and reset it, so.
I was working at this earlier, but we'd still have to set the place.
Well, we could put in the charter, that'll be at designating polling places.
Okay. And we'd have to still set the date, because the date is.
Well, the date is set by the town meeting, not the board of.
You're right, not yet, so the time and place is similar. I think Tim's just worried about if we don't say 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM and we don't mention that, that technically we have to open up the polls from 12 to 8:00. So. No, no, we, we always do this. It's every time after the town meeting. No, I know, but Tim is recommending this in, in case that, that mistake happened like Newtown, that it's just a little verbiage in the charter that would guarantee that, hey, we could do 6 to 8. I mean, I'm, I'm okay. I mean, it doesn't seem like it hurts anything. And we, we would never say 12 to 8, because a lot of people vote before 8:00 AM.
So.
Sounds like a good idea to streamline it, really.
Yeah, works.
So where this gets changed is, this would be C6-3 B1.
C6-3.
B1.
Are you? Oh, yeah. It's also somewhere else.
Well, it's at that location, this has to do, this is simply with the annual budget lead. You might want to keep it open for others, special referendums, where maybe sometime you don't want to have a full day.
No, the only, this is the correct place. I just would say that it also has to be under the petition for overrule.
So, okay, let's stay with the, with the one. Under, under B1, under, in that fourth line, it currently says, and the board of selectmen shall set the hours and designate the place for the budget referendum. Instead, they can do the wordsmithing, but we could just put a period after budget referendum and say that voting on the referendum shall be from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at designated polling places. And then, Nick, do you think it would be better to say assigned polling places? Or doesn't, I mean, people can't go to any of the three, they have to go to their assigned.
Um, assigned versus designated, I don't know if it matters. I mean, I like keeping it open, because obviously polling places have recently changed. So you can't actually put.
open, because obviously polling places have recently changed, so you can't actually put polling places into the charter. But I don't know if it makes a difference, if designated or assigned.
Yep.
Whatever word.
It's almost the same.
Most commonly, or doesn't.
Tim, I have a question. If the idea of adding the six A M to eight P M, of adding that additional six hours at, at the beginning, if that is to save the board of selectmen time, it doesn't say here that it has to be a special meeting where they set the hours, it says, the budget meeting shall set, and the board of selectmen shall set. It doesn't say it has to be at a separate time.
I think the concern is, didn't Newtown forget to do it? Is that what happened?
They forgot to do it.
Yeah.
So, as long as at the budget meeting, the selectmen say, you know, we announced it here, 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 on X date at, from X time to X time, I'm, I would hate to pigeonhole ourselves into a specific timeframe, because there may come a time when, quite frankly, six until twelve is not viable.
No, six till eight P M.
No, 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 I'm saying, six A M until twelve, twelve to eight is the state, is state statute. If, and who knows, freak snowstorm. We, you know, weather is insane these days, we know, free, you know, what, what did they call it, the cyclone thing that went through, the cyclone tornado that went through. I would, I would be loath to specifically say that it has to be between that time and that time, I think it puts the selectmen into an awkward position. They just simply say, this is when it's going, this date, this is time.
The, the selectmen can't do it during the town meeting, however, because the sec, the selectmen have to be in a meeting to do it. So normally what we do is, we either open up our meeting before the town meeting and recess, and then we do it at the end, or we open up a special meeting at the end to set the time.
Okay, then that needs, then that language, if that's the case, that's not what it says here.
Well, it does this, the board of selectmen sets it.
It just says the board of selectmen sets it.
Right, which, yeah, it doesn't go into detail, saying it's.
Exactly.
But they can't set it without being in a meeting, so.
We gotta be in a meeting.
So, does, so, does the word smithing not necessarily have to be the timing, but rather that this will happen at a special meeting of the board of selectmen, is that what the part of this is?
Under the chapter of the town meeting.
Right.
So you get into annual town meeting, and then you get to budget referendum.
Right.
Now, but annual town, budget referendum is obviously before the annual town meeting, so budget referendum is when you have to adjourn to a referendum.
Right.
So technically, that meeting's not closed.
Well, that's a whole other ballgame, because we went around and around about that last year.
We did that last year.
But the town, yes, but that's town meeting, but then the board of selectmen have their meeting. Or perhaps the whole other meeting, it doesn't have to be done in the town meetings. Like, a town meeting does a town meeting, they determine the.
The date.
So would it be much cleaner to have you vote before the town?
We, we can't really do it until we know, technically, the date should come first for the time and place.
Oh, as part of the.
It's kind of.
But if it's in the charter, then it's gone.
That's circular, that's like a Mobius.
Well, it's just, it's just every time they've done it, they said, okay, town sets a date, board of selectmen sets the time and place, so done. The question is whether or not we should put the time in there or not.
Well, that would, yeah, that, that would be the whole purpose, that you wouldn't have to do that anymore, it would always be six A M to eight P M. Again, for the budget referendum, this isn't talking about other special referendums, where maybe you don't want to have fourteen hours of voting.
I don't think putting it in the charter would preclude the need for the board of selectmen to do it. It's just if they screw up, it gives them a backdoor.
Right, right.
Does it give them?
No, they don't, they.
Wait, does it have a backdoor?
They would come, they would come out of here. They'd like, if it's in the charter, that supersedes the one select.
If, if it's in the charter, basically, that'll be the time and designate polling place, and the board of selectmen never have to meet on it, according to what he's doing.
Yeah, ever, yeah.
Right, but if, if, if it wasn't in the charter, and by chance somebody missed at that town meeting and mentioned the, the six to eight, it, it catches it.
Well, yeah, that reverts to the noon time until eight.
Right, that, that theoretically could happen, as if, I don't know what they did in Newtown.
And we have.
Did they go with?
They canceled and rescheduled. So, that was probably after they published.
Yeah.
So, this kind of came up on the Registered Voters Facebook page of.
It can get screwed up, because, okay, let's say, you know, I, I'm not, let's say twenty twenty six, for that budget, I'm not here, and, and Mary's not around, or you have a new, like, we're constantly reading the charter, making sure we're doing things right, and things get messed. This could get messed, just like it did in Newtown. So, having it in here is not a bad thing. I don't, I don't see a downside, except that if something happens, now we're, we're really stuck with charter with the time.
Yeah, we just hope it's repetitive, meaning we catch it every time at the meeting.
Couldn't the board of selectmen meet and change the time for a special circumstance?
Now, yes, we could. We totally could. If something happens or a special circumstances by this, we could change the time in the charter. We could, we could go back and say, yes, something's happened and we want to change the time, legally we could. But right now, if we put it in, we couldn't.
At the time of the town meeting.
Even with overarching state enabling legislation, it says twelve to six.
We, we, we could be less, less restrictive, or actually, it's more restrictive than less.
We can, we can extend the hours.
The towns have the option to do that.
So, but the board of selectmen couldn't say it's from three P M to eight P M.
No.
They can't go that way with the law.
We could go eight to eight.
Yep.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, but, but to your point, if something happened, then the board of selectmen could change the time up to the whatever time the notification is.
The reality is, we're going to have our annual town meeting on April second. The budget referendum is going to be on the twenty second of April, twenty days later. We don't know what the weather's going to be twenty days later, so it has to be either set then or in charter. You can't.
But, but if.
But if there's an emergency.
Up to the notification time, you could probably reset it.
Yeah.
The, well, a, a town meeting is usually five days, right?
Right.
But is the annual town meeting longer? Town meeting is like only five days, but you technically could change it until five days prior, with a special meeting that needed to be, but I, you know, I, I don't see a problem either way. I understand Tim's point.
I'm just trying to find out, I'm trying to think through what could go wrong.
Could go wrong, a hundred percent.
That's all. I, I have no problem with putting it in.
What could go wrong?
Well, we've already identified what could go wrong. This would fix what could go wrong.
There's always something else.
Somebody else can do it.
Yeah. I mean, the question is, if we're locked into that time, is there a downside? I don't think so, because we.
I think we'd always want to make it from six to eight.
We always do it anyway, for every other election.
Right.
You know, and it gives everybody the most time to come.
Yep.
It's, Tim, I'd have been early.
Yep, yep.
Very early.
Very early.
Really early.
I'm not opposed, from a selectman perspective.
And, and, and last night I bounced it off of Melian O'Brien, and she liked the idea.
The only, the only thing I could think is, is if state statute suddenly expanded and now you're to ten o'clock. But then statute would dictate it.
That's right, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would.
Overwrite it. Right.
I think we're in consensus.
Yeah.
I'm trying to read Nick's face to peop- to characterize.
No, I. I suppose, he's, he's sent me this, I don't think.
Yeah.
I don't.
All right, so.
There's a good question, so. Making sure we fared out, like, what could happen?
I, I just.
Yeah.
I worry, I worry, I always worry about being that specific in a document like this.
Yeah.
Yes, it's always reviewed, and it's a five-year review, it's, you know, it's not, it's not a, it's a living document. But I always worry that, just literally pigeonhole, and that makes me nervous.
Well, think, think about this. What if sometime in the future, you had an annual town meeting, and the board of selectmen decide, no, they don't, they don't want to change it from state statute to noon until eight, and that cuts out all the people who vote at six, we usually have a line at six A M of people who vote and run to work.
It's one of the busiest times.
And they don't, they come back. If we don't open the polling place until noon,
Then we're forcing them all into early voting.
But you could, there won't be early. Referendum, so you know, that way, so, hey, future selectmen, board of selectmen could decide, oh, we don't want to make it too.
Don't want to lose that sector, yeah.
Yeah, we're just, we'll forget about the people that have to work out of town, but.
Yeah.
So, it, it keeps the board of selectmen on their best behavior as well.
They aren't be a rowdy bunch.
Okay, so that was it. I haven't heard anything more.
No, did we get consensus, so we could give directions to the attorney?
Everyone's fine?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so that'll, that'll go in for future, our future review.
I do have one thing, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add that, I didn't get a chance to email you, because I did talk to a couple of selectmen, or emailed to them separately, which I allow to do by caucus, by the way, and also the board of finance, but we've, we've taken great strain here to go in and find out ways to remove appointed officials, because they could be there forever, right? I've identified a couple of places where we have appointed town officers, which there's no way to remove them. Specifically, the, the tax collector, tax collector serves an indefinite term. There's no way to remove the tax collector. Same thing with the assessor. The emergency management director and a town sanitarian can be removed by the director of health with the approval of the board of selectmen, but a town selector, sanitarian should be able to be removed by the selectmen for good cause. So I would, I would recommend that, and I can give this out to you guys, that we look at those and put a, basically a removal, and for the tax collector, the tax collector is appointed by the board of selectmen. So the tax collector should be removed from office by the board of selectmen for good cause. And I'll give this to you to look at. For the assessor, the board of finance actually appoints our assessor, and should, should be in an indefinite term, but the assessor actually has duties prescribed by the board of selectmen and board of finance. So similar to like a comptroller, the remover of the assessor should be from office by the board of selectmen or board of finance for good cause, provided that such dismissal should have the approval of a majority of the full board of selectmen and full board of finance. So maybe both should all, like, hold on. Emergency management director, right now it's the same person, but like fire marshals on the statute, but emergency management director, it should be the board of selectmen, and then for the sanitarian, it also should be the board of selectmen. So I'm going to hand this out for just.
Yeah, I'm interested. I'm wondering whether you have all of them, because there's planning and zoning. As another.
Planning and zoning, actually, yeah. Just use the, about planning and zoning here, we're, we're looking at C eight. C eight.
And would it be better to give it a specific term that has to be renewed?
So if you look at what, what's in here on the there, I'm here. This stuff together, hold on, here we go. All right, administrative officers in departments.
Yeah.
The planning and zoning is not in this list. So in our administrative officers, which is section C eight, we have tax collector, assessor, which we spoke about, director of health.
Emergency management director, whatever.
Uh, that is it? Oh, yeah, you just did that, yeah. Emergency manager, director, which we talked about. Director of health is in statute. What they can, it can't be removed for. But if you notice in there, they talk about appointing a town sanitarian. A town sanitarian is a town employee. The director of health shouldn't have full license to just be the one to hire or remove. The board of selectmen should also be able to leave for good cause. Right? Looking at fire marshal, that is in statute, because actually, there's a hearing process for them. Town attorneys, I didn't put any of it in there, because realistically, a town attorney is a very important position once we put it in. If the board of selectmen didn't have confidence in a town attorney, they could just literally assign everything to somebody else. The retainer would still be paid to the town attorney, like the fifteen thousand dollars a year or whatever it is.
Other ways to get rid of them.
Yeah, but it, and it's only a two-year term.
It's okay.
No, right.
A big thing with. Yeah, that's already set up to be reappointed every two years.
Yeah, but so it's right now, the same thing for, well, a tax collector is indefinite term. So seriously, you've got a tax collector, never show up for work, can't move out, technically. I know, it, it wouldn't happen, you'd think, but it's a municipal employee, but at the same time, in here, they have indefinite terms. You can't have that, right? That's like a life appointment. With respect to town attorney, department of labor, it's not an issue. Town engineer, you could just appoint it, didn't say anything about a term, so I'm not really worried about that. A building official has a term, but there are also rules in state statute of how you get rid of the building official, because of the nature of what a building official is.
And what's the term for the building official?
Four years.
Four years.
Yeah. Let's see. Yeah, so I, I just think, looking at those, it's pretty clear that.
I do catch that.
You know, what it was, it was.
I've seen that before, too.
I, I think it was, I don't know, I think I was reading about the assessor, and I just happened, because I was, I know I was looking here at the health director's term. The health director's term is actually set by statute. It's four years from the time they were appointed. So it doesn't roll like December or January, because I was looking at terms. As I went through the terms, I see the assessor is indefinite. I'm like, oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Didn't know it.
And so is tax, like, for sure.
Yes. Yeah, they're definite terms.
That's an easy consensus.
Yeah, it just, there needs to be some, and by the way, it needs to be by the board, it shouldn't be by the first selectman, it should be the board of selectmen. This is important. And I think with a tax assessor, specifically because of the nature of what the tax assessor does, it should be both boards.
Yeah.
What about the finance?
Yeah, finance director can be removed. It's the comptroller, finance director. If you looked at the the last law. Yeah, powered duties, purchasing authority, agreements. It does say that here, all of them.
No, I believe.
Uh, section G. So it would be all the way down for.
Got it.
Yeah, removal.
By the board of selectmen for good cause, okay.
Yep, and have a full majority of board of finance, because again, the comptroller, or excuse me, finance director after this, has kind of dotted the lines to both sides. So it would be inappropriate, I think, for one or the other to be able to make the decision. So anyway, that's my thought.
That's a great thought.
I have a question. First of all, what is the town sanitarian?
So the town sanitarian is, is actually the person who does sewage kind of thing, so septic systems. Yeah, they really, they really look at septic systems and how they're built and things like that. Our, our director can also do that. As long as there are registered sanitarians, which most of the time the town, the directors are, the director of health usually has an M P H as well, and is, is an R S. But you can hire people who are just registered sanitarian, and they're doing inspections.
Okay.
Yeah.
That said, how, what would be the rationale, since at this point, the town, yeah, sanitarian is appointed and potentially removed by the director of health?
Right.
Why would that be moved to the board of selectmen?
Because of state.
Well, because the, the issue, the issue is that we could, it's, it's actually an employee of the town, right? I, I don't think that the, the way this is written, it's the director has to sign off of letting somebody go. I think that could be a problem, because you could have somebody basically protecting an employee that maybe isn't doing well. Right? Maybe, maybe I need to make that just cause to go after the director, but it seems to me the board of selectmen should have the ability, and the director should have the ability.
Or conversely, hate them and want to get rid of them.
Well, I mean, I, usually it's a hard time keeping them, it's usually not an issue, but if we bring, if we bring, let's say we hire somebody and bring them on, and we think, as, like, okay, me, this, this, because it really does come down to me. I look at the sanitarian, like, this person really isn't doing a great job. I disagree with the health department director, who should have say when it comes to voting, if the health department director is protecting somebody, or it's a friend, or like, it's, yeah, it has to, has to be for cause. You can't just go out, but like progressive discipline, for instance, I'm, I could perhaps be the one giving progressive discipline to that person, if the director's not. And then we let that person go if there's a problem. I just think it makes sense to have the board of selectmen in that equation. But again, it's, it's, I can't see anywhere where that would be a, a problem. But when it comes to any town employee, it really should be the board of selectmen. Well, I should see town boy, I have the most to call the town points. But in, in employee positions like this, I think the board of selectmen should have some say. Especially because that's the way we've done it.
It just seems like the town sanitarian is a different animal than everyone else we're talking about. Um, everyone else we're talking about is a department head.
Yeah.
Town sanitarian is.
It's just an employee. Yeah, even, even the fact that it's in here that we, I mean, we have to have, we should have one.
Yeah.
Like right now, we're vacant, we're trying to hire. Um, what's interesting though is, we're probably going to find an associate director of health or assistant director of health. Who has an RS and that'll be our sanitarian for a piece of time. It was just having hard times, the everybody else keeping people.
Yeah.
Really, really difficult in that industry. But the sanitarian is, is an important part, but it's. It's one person, it's an employee. Like we, right now, we have temporary, part-time sanitarians who come from Richfield. And, uh, on Fridays, our former sanitarian helps us do inspections on Fridays. So we're getting those things inspected and then the, the director of health does it too. But it really is much more, it's really more of an employee to me, but we should have one. So I like having. Charter, but being able to get rid of one based on discipline or whatever, it should be the board of selectmen.
The charter requires us to have one. You know, and I, I would. Not support getting rid of it.
No, no, I mean, right, right now, we're trying to find one. We have people filling in, right, but. It's hard to find one. They're, they're hard to get one who's actually, well, we'll, we'll get one, we just got to fill them in. We're gonna get one, working on it. Anyway, that's something to think about is, uh. I, I do have a.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, just to, you know, obviously if I want to, uh. Charter, new council, make sure we're not missing someone, but.
Yeah.
I did look through the statutes, I didn't see any dismissal criteria for these people, so if it is statute, override it.
Thank you.
I have one more thing. Um.
But before we go there, Tim, can we give consensus to the attorney to, to really start putting a pen to this? You know, look at this, if everybody's in agreeance.
Um, yeah, I think.
The fault, because we want to keep this.
Yeah, I, I think we need to kind of look at this more closely. Some have two-year terms, some have four-year terms. Some run, I think it'd be easier if. Everyone's terms kind of end in the same, you know, always end in January, always end in.
Well, the, the problem is some of these, some of, some of these, um, are spelled out in statute, the charter just. You know, repeats it. Building officials, quadruple, it's four years, but they say, except for it's a quadruple. Quadrannually, yeah, weird. Um, same thing for. Health director is four years. The, uh, I don't know if it's specified for the assessor at all.
Yeah.
But ours is indefinite, so it says what.
I mean, I think it would be helpful to have the appointments done in odd numbered years.
I know.
That, that way, right after election, but you. Someone doesn't come in and clean out.
No, no, I, I, well, I kind of agree, but right now they're, right now they're all over the map and I can't, we can't get rid of anybody, let's just. Do cause, right? Like a health director, assessor, anybody, you can't really get rid of them. Well, I can't get rid of assessor all daily right now. But, uh.
But with the change in charter, you could reset their terms.
No, no, the terms, I wouldn't change the charter a bit because right now, everybody is off of different terms right now. You know what I'm saying? Appointed officials versus elected officials, elected start, uh, what is it, first Monday in December.
Right.
Appointed officials start first Monday in January. That's the only thing where that's out.
Right.
But then the specific ones that are in here are because it's, it's in statute.
It, well, okay, so it runs from the hiring.
Is the term cause or good cause? I mean, fired.
I, I've heard good cause, but I think it's in our charter already under.
It is.
The finances, because.
Yeah, it's used as good cause in the charter.
Or be cause.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. But I, I understand where you're coming from. It'd be nice if they were kind of all together, but they, they were already naturally. You know, I do, I do keep, I, I went back.
Yeah, you've got to stay on top of it.
Yeah, well, actually that happened. I, I had to go back and actually look what people were. Appointed and I added them to a spreadsheet where now we.
Yep.
We know when everybody's coming up. It wasn't tracked really well before.
Oh, um, okay, so is this much handed out?
That's like.
You're showing in bold, added language.
What I would, what I would suggest, it really has to go through the attorney to make sure that works, so. Those are, those would be the suggestions. And for the assessor. Um, I checked with the chair of board of finance and other selectmen, just to make sure I'm not off base from what they were referred as well.
It'll make perfect sense, Dan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess you can leave the assessor as having an indefinite term as long as you have that paragraph.
Yeah, you don't, you don't want it to be something where it's easy to get rid of somebody or be a political thing, especially an assessor. At the same time, there's, you know, if there's a big thing that the board of selectmen should bring out, then. Be reasonable.
Yeah, the only thing I would say, just as structuring this, is that. On the page with the tax collector. All of these, you don't need to start with removal period. You just have B.
Yeah.
Collector may be removed from office by the board of selectmen.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah.
Town attorney wants.
So we could just.
I think you probably did that because that's how the finance.
Did I have the finance director did it?
Oh.
That's okay.
Happy face.
Yeah.
All right.
I did, I did kind of follow up that, my model.
I mean, we can, whatever model you like, we can certainly. Change the finance director to match it too, so everything's consistent.
Okay, so you think this would cover all the ones you need?
Lose the word. Yeah, just lose removal.
Yeah, just lose that period.
Are you suggesting you do it like?
It's not a sentence.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I, that's what I did, I just took what I was going through this.
Yeah, I know.
But I went through all those positions and that's, you know, the ones that I didn't put have it in statute.
Um, so. Do we have a consensus to go with, um, the recommendations?
Yes.
Three, four, five. Eight, six.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I have one, one question.
And this is.
Just, just in reading.
This is it. Joe.
I can see it.
Uh, and I'll, I'll look at this more in depth with wording.
Right.
You get the flavor of.
Yeah.
Consent. Just on, on the, the, the assessor section on the table, so. The majority of the full board of selectmen and the full board of finance.
I don't have to use full board of selectmen.
Does that mean that every single member has to be, or are we just talking?
I, I think with the board of finance under the comptroller, it would meant that it had to be the full board. And you had the majority of the full board, meaning if somebody wasn't there that night.
You can't do it.
You can't do it.
But this is, approval of a majority of the full board of.
Right, not a simple majority, like if, 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 let's say, let's say four people show up at a forum. Right, four people are at a forum and three say yes, and one says no, or the other way around. Well, that isn't really the same as the whole board voting. So by full board, it means all seven have to be there and the majority of that seven have to.
Yeah, you need four out of, out of, out of more than a quorum.
Right, yeah. It's a quorum, you could have three people make a decision.
Yeah.
And you have to have four for a whole board, not that, the full board should vote.
Makes perfect sense.
That's why it's that way with the comptroller, because it's a higher bar.
But if someone is consistently not showing up, then you're kind of hung up.
Then you're hung up. But this is a, this is a significant enough, I think, event that you're gonna.
Make sure that you rally to.
Yeah, yeah, so it should be a.
What if you require?
Full board of selectmen and the full board of finance, so that's ten people.
So full board of selectmen, you don't need to put that in there because three's a quorum and, or two's a quorum.
But you're talking, the total is ten, what you need is six.
Yeah.
To get a simple majority.
Well, though, each, it has to have had each pass each board.
Right, separately.
If, yeah, if you want to make sure that all three selectmen vote, you could say. That it requires a seventy-five percent majority. That way, two out of three doesn't get there.
Provided that such dismissal shall have the approval of a majority of the board, of the full board of selectmen.
So, yeah.
And the majority of the full board of finance.
So I would put in separately.
No, you just have to add majority.
Majority, oh yeah, okay.
Shall have approval of the majority of the full board of selectmen.
Okay.
And majority of the full board of finance.
And they're going to act separately anyway, Dan, by, by nature of the boards.
Right, because that way you say majority.
But the wording expresses that you have.
Absolutely.
But you think we still need to have full?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, because you want the full board there, I think, and that way, you don't have just two, two selectmen there.
Yeah.
Voting at one, you know.
But if we said seventy-five percent.
Made a special meeting and all of a sudden.
No, if you have seven people on the board of finance and five show up and all five are in favor of it, that's a majority of the full board of finance.
It is true. Yeah, that'd be a majority of the full board, wouldn't it?
So all, if the, if the majority goes and all of them are in favor of it, there it is.
Yeah.
But you still are fulfilling the spirit of the law and then getting five out of seven.
Majority, right, the majority.
Yeah.
Someone should put that footnote in to remind me that, that's, that could constitute a full board.
So, yeah. So think about the language anyway.
Sorry, pain.
Difficult, I'm sorry. I did have one thing, but it also could be, when you guys talk about language for the, um. Department of Economic Development, we talk about language in there, there's one little thing I might want to change. Um, right now, we are ma, we, we're mandating that we put, that we create a Department of Economic Development. And mandating we always have to have somebody in it. That's, that's all, I'm debating whether we should have may or shall. Do we keep it permissive for the board of selectmen? Because this is a perfect example of a year.
Yeah, a year, if it's vacant, all of a sudden you.
We can't hire somebody, right, right, right. Right now with this budget, if we found ourselves in a position where we're going to be doing a, a reduction in force. We would be looking at that position among union positions, among all of them. It's not a, it's not a town authority per se.
Right.
I think the may might want to be.
I think the may is the way to go.
Just in case. Um, the other ones you just can't live without, like, we have to have a department of all that works, so that's just. But I'm not saying this is not important. I just was looking at it, I'm looking for the first time in, in I don't know how many years where. We're looking at if the budget goes down, we're going to have a reduction in force.
I mean, you have to have a control, right? There are certain positions you have to have. And you can't function without it, but.
And likely, likely for some of these positions, you know, to go sideways, some of them will become part-time.
Yeah.
Because we do have that option in some places, okay, we don't have full-time versus part-time. Because then it saves us so half a salary and benefits, et cetera. Um, I certainly don't want to go there, but then I looked at that, I was like, wow, that really ties, that ties our hands.
Well, my, my favorite position is our benefits manager. Our benefits manager works part-time and doesn't get benefits.
Yeah.
Oh, that's rude.
Yeah, that may change. Well, I mean, eventually, I mean, things are, things are tight. I mean, we, our HR director is the same way. Part-time HR director.
Yeah.
And should we lose that position, um, I think it's pretty clear that the comptroller and I are going to do HR for at least a year.
Yeah.
Because we just don't have the money to not bring somebody in to replace it, not now.
Um, do you have a handout for the?
I did not, I just, I just, I was, I wrote, I wrote in, it's section C eight dash fifteen.
C eight dash fifteen.
And just cha, changed the.
Oh, that's right, we haven't, it's not really in there yet.
Yeah, the, just the first couple shaws to May. Um, so there shall be.
Nick's got the note.
Yeah. Okay, and may appoint a qualified person, and then the shaws are what their duties are, that's what you shall do, but. That's something that I would look at. That's one thing I've noticed that, I feel like we're really on track for a lot of this stuff we've done. And, uh, it's just funny, like, I've been, I've been doing this for two years, I'll be in the charter at least once a day. And we find these little.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you're a little late to the party, we started a couple of months ago, but.
I, but I thought I was good. And I, I went through it, I came up with all these ideas, I'm like, I think we're good, and then all these little things keep happening. Um, I think it's part of, yeah, listen, we talk about the learning curve of the job. There's always a learning curve of the job, and I'm dealing with new things every year. So.
The, um, can we circle back to the advisory question and just resolve that? Um, so that's C six dash three V three.
Oh, yeah, three. I, I think you guys could change, just write the fabulous.
Really, really like.
Was adequate or acceptable? I think acceptable sounds a little bit more positive, don't you?
Yeah.
Definitely.
Um. In addition to the vote on the budget, yes, so. The previous charter vision commission said too high, too low, or just right. So we're going to change that to acceptable.
Yes.
This budget is too high.
This budget is too low.
This budget is just right.
We're getting punchy, it's only eighteen.
I, I think I may need to re, circle back with, uh, Pat Dober. He has, is Mary still there? Um, he hasn't, he hasn't attended a few meetings.
She's there, she's.
Yeah, Mary's there. Have you heard from Pat Dober?
I have not.
I mean, I'm, I'm reluctant to, we need to get into the controversial items. And I don't want to leave someone out because they didn't, didn't show. He hasn't been here for a few meetings.
Well, how do you feel about just talking it through and then just checking and making sure he's okay with it? I mean.
Well, we can't make a motion.
Yeah, everyone, everyone.
We're, we're talking about really putting.
Really voting on, hey, you know, there's, everything else has been a consensus. We're going to have a few items that aren't necessarily going to be a consensus. Those are the items that we count, that we, um.
Five out of how many of us?
Uh, well, we're only missing one member.
So, so we have six right now, okay? So let's put it this way, if it's three to three, I get an extra vote.
Not until we vote on this charter. The only thing Robert's rules covers is, um, the town meeting. Um, we never, it's in the, we're making the change in the charter. Well, you should run, you should use it to run a meeting.
So.
I, I don't know that.
Anyway, that's, that's the issue.
I think we've had consensus on most of this.
Yeah, if there's a tie vote, I think you maybe.
Then we wait for, then we wait for Pat.
So let's. We're going to, I don't, we don't know why it's not here. So, I mean, I, I think we've made some good progress tonight, but we're really, here's what we're trying to do. I was hoping that at the next meeting, we would then, if we could vote on these items tonight. Then at the next meeting, we could go through the final revision, final draft from Nick and then comb through it. See if there are any other adjustments before we were going to have a public hearing. You, on our draft based on, yeah, seeing what people want. Let's.
A question of procedure. Do we have to have the entire group here in order to have a vote?
We could, no, we could, we could leave him out right now.
We could have four people here and vote. We could have just.
As long as we all agree.
Yeah, yeah. At some point, I said, we're not going to have any special votes, you're not going to kind of sandbag it while you're away.
You know, but the thing could happen with Alice being in surgery in May, she could miss an important vote because we tried to hold it off. For another member that just happens not to be here.
Yeah.
So I. I believe you got a matchup plan too, Mr. Chairman. So, one of the things in Robert's rules is a motion to reconsider. Um, given the fact that this would be, correct me if wrong, if you know, Nick, given the fact this would be the very next meeting. Um, given the fact that this would be, correct me if wrong, if you know, Nick, given the fact this would be the very next meeting, if there were something that he had a big issue about and you wanted him to be able to vote his conscience, whatever, everybody passed their honor, says peace, you can do a motion to reconsider that, as long as whoever makes the motion had voted in favor of it, you can do a motion to reconsider. What you would do is you lay it on the table, you say motion reconsider, everybody says yes, great, and then you put, it goes back to where it was. You could reconsider that actual vote.
It couldn't be raised by him, but it only could be raised by someone.
Anybody who voted.
Anybody.
Who'd be willing to open it up again?
Yeah, right. Nobody again, as long as it's, it's really, as long as it's the next meeting.
But it would be irrelevant if we did a six to zero, you know, if it was.
Oh, yeah, unless, unless, by the way, I mean, um, that, that, well, it's still legal. If you did six to zero when it passes, on the very next time, you could do a motion to reconsider it, but then after that.
No, I know, but, but if.
What I'm saying is if, let's say he was adamant, you wanted him to have his piece or his say.
We're just trying to be polite, Dan.
Yeah, that's polite, I'm just saying you could do it, be polite. You could continue your business, because one member not being here should never hold back the business of a commission.
Right.
Well, I know, I mean, it's, I mean, it's getting to the time where we normally would adjourn anyway.
Sure.
Um, and I had, when, when Penny was away, I said, look, when you're away, we're not going to have any big votes, we're not going to kind of slip stuff by.
To know when a person is going to be there or not be there, right? I mean, there might be some.
And the emails go well.
Somebody at least sends an email, responds, I won't be able to make it.
I was just going to say, I think there's also a difference. I knew ahead of time, I told her I'm not going to be there for that meeting. If we had, and this is nothing against, against any, this is not specific to anybody. If, if there's a member of the commission who doesn't come and doesn't at least inform, they're not going to be there. Kind of express their.
So, um, Mary, could you take a look and see?
That's a great point, and Tim has emailed directly and said, do you have any proposals of your own that you would like to share? So we could put them on the agenda to maybe, um, uh, where the public would be interested in and would show up, right? Tim, did you not do that?
Yeah, we were going to have a time where in public, I don't want to have a public hearing.
No, no.
Where we left, left some things open.
You invited, um, Pat's ideas to, to, to send them forward, so they could be on the agenda.
He was, he was there at the meeting, I think that was the last meeting he attended. So has he missed two in a row, or has it been three?
I've only seen him once, is it this?
He's missed two.
This is my third.
Okay, so he's missed two.
Two last round.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we try a vote, and if it's. And if it's six, if it's six to zero.
Can I just ask another question about procedure? How do we do these votes? Does, does Nick say, okay, here's that terrific spreadsheet that I put together, every single line item?
No, 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 we're voting on the, the things that we tabled.
Right.
This is going back and voting on the things that we tabled, so.
Okay.
Make a motion, there's a second, there's discussion, and we discussed these things already, so, except for Terry, so, um.
All right, he was trying to catch up.
And, yeah.
Reading.
Just stay with me and vote with me.
In your dreams.
Right, exactly, maybe two, if we start with one.
But I got a question there, don't you have to go back, even if there's consensus, did you actually vote on those?
No, no, we will.
The whole package.
No, no, that's, you guys got to get consensus. When we have a consensus, we give it to Nick, it's in there, and it's not final, final, but it's in the final draft.
We'll make one motion.
Right, so. I'm going to cut down on some of Mary's work, not having to take all these motions.
So what's the first thing, Tim?
Okay, um. Uh, a five-person Board of Selectmen.
Wait, are we staying, are we staying on the just right vote yet?
Well, I thought we already agreed.
Oh, is that acceptable now?
Yes.
Can we get a consensus for acceptable?
Acceptable, okay, so we're there.
Oh, so we don't even need that yet so far.
I don't know.
It's not a motion.
I didn't think that was going to be.
Okay, great, oh, good.
We, we have nearly gotten there before, and we said, let's talk to the Board of Finance, so we got that done. Okay, so expanding the Board of Finance to a five-person board.
Or a selectman.
Yeah, or a selectman, I'm sorry, yes.
That'd be a shock. I'll, we will make a motion to accept the amended regulation to, um, change the Board of Selectmen from a three to a five-member board.
And this would be in C three dash four.
C three dash four, and I'm trusting you on that. Yes, the Board of Selectmen, yes.
Second.
Okay. And we'll open it for discussion. And, um. Terry, do you want to go last?
As far as what I think.
Uh, would you like to go first, or would you like to go last?
Um, so, so the benefit of the five-member board, I think it definitely will give more transparency and it will, it will help people not to, it'll be harder for people not to, um, let me go last, I'm trying to think what I want to say.
Okay, um, well, I, I'll kind of start it out anyway, and we have, it was not proposed by the Board of Selectmen. And it was not proposed by the previous Charter Revision Commission, but it was considered, John, and you were there too.
It was considered.
It was considered and not accepted.
Right.
Tim?
And, and our, and, and also, yes, just a second, and also, Paul Zakowski, who's former selectman.
I, I saw that online.
You know, he said he, he did not support either. Yes, Joe?
Yes, I'd like to speak to this. Uh, I've asked a few people, uh, maybe ten to twelve, uh, people of Bethel, and, um, these are people who are knowledgeable about town government, they're either serving or they have served. Uh, most of them do not see any validity in this proposal. Their reasons seem to center about, three is working. Um, it would, five would only muddy the waters, uh, not necessarily provide more transparency. Uh, it might take longer to get things done, to get business done. Um, there doesn't seem to be any real reason to change it. Um, so I'm thinking that if it does go as a proposal, it should be a separate item, definitely, if it does. I'm not so sure that the people are really in favor of this one. So, I, I'm thinking maybe it might not be worthwhile to propose, but if it is proposed, it should be definitely a separate item for people to vote on. Thank you.
Great, yes, Nick.
So I would, um, add to that, that the former first selectman actually proposed this at the very first meeting. Um, so, yes, Mr. Zakowski was here and he was adamant in his dislike of the idea, but it was presented by Matt Nickerbocker.
And last time too, I didn't interrupt you, so.
I'm sorry.
And last time too.
Right. Oh, okay, so the challenge of a three-person anything, especially given minority representation, is that major decisions are made by two people. If you have a five-person, you have more input, you have more discussion. You, I do think that there is more, I don't like the word transparency, I think the expression would be, um, more discussion, more, um, awareness of various issues. Um, and I, I would also hesitate to say that, you know, the town is opposed to this, because we quite frankly don't know what the town.
Well.
Just a few people.
Tim, gentle last voting record, I didn't know that.
Well, let, let, let her finish first.
So, so I, I would just, I, I would agree with a five-member Board of Selectmen, so that people didn't get that in there.
Yes.
Change the, change the state statute, um, so I would be in favor of it.
Yeah, and, and again, um, I just wanted to bring a reminder to mention to, in two thousand fourteen, ten years ago, this, the question, a joint question came up on the ballot, and it was defeated fifty-eight percent to forty-six percent. And should the charter be amended to provide for a five-member Board of Selectmen consisting of a first selectman and four selectmen with elected terms of four years? So, the Bethel voters were asked that combined question, four years, five members, and it got turned down.
Which one was it, the five members or?
Well, we, so what we don't know is, if you ask them the same question, then it's kind of disrespectful, but if you say, okay, well.
Those need to be broken apart anyways.
You know, it's, by combining it, I don't know whether, whether it would have been any different if you split it. Would it still be, you know, rejected, but.
I can't, anyone say no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I, I understand, and I hear you, and I understand the history and it's important. We're not where we were ten years ago. And we are not where we were even five years ago, and we, you know, with COVID and all of that. Um, we are, we are still the same Bethel, but we are a different group of people. And we are in different times. So, just as, let's say, session, past performance is no guarantee of future results. Past performance doesn't necessarily have to bind us to what was.
Okay, else?
Um, I remember that vote, it was, it was eleven years ago, uh, we have, one of the things that's happened in Bethel is huge change in the last eleven years. The pandemic brought in people that have no idea what our form of government is, there's a lot of, and, and no fault of theirs, they came from something completely different. Um, they came into a town that is growing, I mean, our population size between now and eleven years ago is quite different. And at some point, the town, and it may not be in our generation at all, has got to start to figure out the best representation for a larger town. At some point, we're going to be on the threshold of being a city. And is it going to be a mayor council form of government, is it going to be, you know, blah, blah, blah? But one of the things that intrigued me is that many of the towns that have faced some of our issues, because I don't, I'm not up for reinventing the wheel here, we're all faced with, this was the easy way to move in a direction that we're eventually going to end up with in fifteen, twenty years. So that was the thinking behind it, so that you're not changing the town meeting form of government, and you're allowing more people, I know that with these boards, having been on P and Z for a long time, you sort of give everybody a little job that they are interested in doing and want to do. And this is one step up from that, you have more voices, you have more opportunity to do background, you have more opportunity to get to know people. I think it's better representation, having a few more, we're not talking about going to a ten-member board, we're talking about going, adding two people. So it's not, you can't caucus with three people easily, you can't, you know, when is it a meeting, when is it not a meeting? I think that's where I feel the transparency is a little bit easier, because you can get together and work things through posting, I mean, it, it's, it's much more workable. I mean, for those of us who have been on seven-member boards before, you have ideas and a lot more opportunity to express them. So that's, from that standpoint, um, I'm not at all interested in reinventing our way forward if there's good models out there. And the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities has a lot of towns our size taking this route very successfully, so we're not going to be the first ones, it's not going to be a pioneer. But I do think it allows for independent voices that we may not have had before. Um, I don't know whether people are resistant to change or whether they really honestly believe that the three-person board is working. It can work, but I'm finding some of its redundancies frustrating. Um, I think five members is just adding two people, and I think that there's some opportunity for greater dialogue within the town and more people at the top to approach, so there's accessibility issues too. I'm in favor of it.
And John?
Obviously, I'm not in favor of it. Eleven years ago, the majority of the town said they were not in favor of it. Five years later, Terry and I sat on a Charter Revision Commission, and we gave the town the opportunity to come in, because that was one of the topics and one of the recommendations from the first selectman, okay? They overwhelmingly said they did not want that form of, up to five members, okay? And we didn't even make it a recommendation to sit in Matt Nickerbocker's desk and not be voted on, because we clearly did the work of the people and, and decided that that wasn't important to be put on there, okay? Obviously, I am for smaller government. Right now, a Board of Selectmen of three has been working for many years, and I don't see a reason to just muddy it up. There's, you know, e- e- even if you added two more people, you're going to have a majority party, and that majority party can caucus together. So the chances of one or the other party having the majority and not going together, i- it's, it's the same thing as, as a party of three. You know, it's just one more person that would have an idea, but we have public input that nobody has an idea. So, everybody has a chance to come in, in front of every meeting and talk about what works or what their best ideas are, and we're not getting it, so. I, I would not be in favor of increasing the selectmen to, to a five-member.
Mr. Chairman, as a, as an official member, I do get to say, may I, or you want to get?
Oh, Terry, Terry.
Oh, you want to come back to Terry and then give me a last?
No, actually, John, I agree with everything John said, but I am in favor of the five-member board. I think there is more transparency, as we've all said, and I, I think it's always better to have more ideas, more people to support one another. And also, you hear, oh, the Board of Selectmen has two Republicans and one Democrat, or they have two Democrats, one Republican, and, you know, that's not enough people, it's, it's always going to be one-sided. Well, I think if you have two more people, have more of a chance of, you know, that not happening. I mean, it's going to happen, but.
There's always going to be.
Right, yeah.
And that's.
Um, you know, I, I go back and forth, I mean, I understand, but the other thing, in its totality, you look at what our representation is, we have a Board of Selectmen and we have a Board of Finance. If we're going to be going to someday a mayor council, it's going to be one group. Right now, we have ten people making the most important decisions, we break it up, any financial goes to the Board of Finance pretty much. And running the town on a day-to-day basis, keeping three of us actually makes it a heck of a lot less political. Because there's not a lot less drama, I mean, this is something Matt and I kind of talked about here and there. I, I don't think it increases transparency, because everything we do, every vote we take is out there, we talk about it, it's, it's not transparency that's the issue. It's politics that's the issue.
Yeah.
And, and running the town of twenty-one thousand people, I think we're very lucky that that doesn't become a very political board, that, that has been, I think, the issue in watching other towns and the dramas and the things that happen, usually it one person on one direction or the other, it gets crazy. And we do have the ability to caucus. I have the ability to caucus with Rich anytime I want, because under FOI, we have the legal authority to form a majority caucus, and I can talk to him on a day-to-day basis if I need to about whatever's going on. That's important, that, like, like, I can delegate my duties to Rich, I got to be able to tell Rich what I want to delegate. It's not just to the acting first selectman, but if there's somebody coming up, like, Rich is going to go to an event or something like that, I don't always have to run it through Mary. It's FOI gives us that ability. It's, you got to be careful, I cannot be out there like just collaborating with Rich against the other one, you know? But that does exist for reasons like this, because we have three, and a lot of other places have just three selectmen. So, I'm not, I'm not really for it, I don't have a vote, I'm just kind of telling you how I feel about it. Um, if we're going to move to mayor form of government someday, we got to look at totality, we got to look at the Board of Finance, we got to look at the Board of Selectmen, and figure out if we're going to put them together, and then, you know, call it a, call it a mayor council, whatever you want to do, I think we'll be long-term on that. Well, I don't think people are in a hurry to do it, but it's like we talked earlier about representative democracy, right? At the town level, we have the most direct democracy, because we have a town meeting form of government, but we know that the apathy is an issue, it can be hijacked very easily. And all the good work of the Board of Finance goes down the tubes, that's why the Board of Finance has seven members. Because they actually have, Board of Finance has the majority of the power for a lot of things we give a town like that. So I think you just have to look at its totality, we have ten people who are making the decisions, we have another fifteen hundred, hopefully more, possibly more, who are making this, a lot of the bigger decisions, because of the way it's set up. I don't see adding it on, does become more political, it is harder to find people, obviously, to run, but I guess if people have a bigger seat, maybe they'll run for it. I don't think even when they do, they put in as much effort though. I don't think even when they do, they put in as much effort though. If you had a bigger board, you want people, a smaller board, you want people who are actually there to do the work. Not just show up and say, hey, it was my thought, and then walk off. It's harder to get a bigger board like that, if I had a more functional one, actually put in the work. They'll come because they want to say I'm a selectman. But, you know, do they really come to the work? So that's just kind of my feeling, I'm not, I'm not for it, I don't have a vote, obviously. That's kind of where, the last two years since I've done this, and I do think someday, yeah, we, I think, I think the number I hear of Bethel should be about twenty-five thousand people someday.
That's usually the.
That's what I've heard, yeah, and that probably will be.
And then we're about five thousand off.
Right now, yeah, we're twenty-one thousand.
We're twenty-one.
But four thousand is a big change, huge change. I think someday it'll probably come. But I think if we do it, we should look at it, the totality, not just like add to the board of selectmen. Literally, usually the board of finance, board of selectmen, combine them someday into a council, if that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, we've gained about, yeah, twelve hundred in the past eleven years.
Yeah, so that's, to net. It'll be interesting to see what this next census does, because obviously, I think we've grown a little faster with the census says. We were supposed to be at twenty thousand six hundred this year. I think we're more like twenty-one, but it's hard to really tell the different numbers out there. But, but again, I think when this time comes, moving up in the board of selectmen isn't the way to get there. I think it's looking at someday, putting it all together in a one council.
Jumping that step and going.
Yeah.
My, my only, just to address that particular issue, is my, my only understanding is many towns did this on the way to that. Because they felt that it was a smoother transition to allow there to be more authority. When you combine them, you're going to end up with,
Yeah.
you know, with ten, ten people.
Well, then you're going to end up like trying to remove people from the board. I think, I think twelve people would be too much on a council of the census.
I don't think we have to reinvent this, I think they, I think there are towns that have figured this out, but I see, the point that I would make is, eventually, we're going to do either a, a strong mayor council or a weak mayor council kind of government at some point. Moving this in this direction keeps the town meeting form of government. We have that many more people, so I just, I'm, I'm just respectfully.
Sure, and I'm just doing my take due, then I back out.
I think Alice is going to pull her motion back a lot.
And again, you know, my, my feeling is that the three has been working, frankly, when we've had a problem before, it's, it was during a time when we had kind of casual, I'm talking about FOI issues, when Charlie Steck was in office. And he was used to running a private business, and so he got caught up in having some illegal meetings when having.
In the bar.
Oh, yeah, and it was.
Really?
Yeah, I can't do that.
And it was.
I have stories, go ahead.
That, that becomes different, when you have.
Yeah, what you got?
Nothing now, I used, but I didn't, I didn't wave the alcohol posse, so I can't drink here.
Anyway.
I'm just wondering why Alice was in the bar.
Alice was fine in the bar.
And if we had a five-person board of selectmen, our budget would have, what, another fifteen thousand dollar hole to fill? What, what's this type of?
I think it's like fifty, it's fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five still.
So it'd be.
Another, another eleven dollars.
Can you imagine that math?
I'm just trying to do the better thing.
I, no, I understand.
So, all that, should I try your minds?
I, I, I suggest we know that this would be a tie. I believe if it's a tie.
Well, we don't know until we take the vote, so.
Okay, fair enough.
Because Penny right now is wavering, I could see her.
And the tie is the very reason why I said, why bother even going through all this? Bring damage, so we can, right, so, I'll call the question, try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
What's, what's the, what's the question?
Alice's motion to expand to a five-person board of selectmen. We have three votes in favor? Okay, all against?
Nay.
No.
So again, that's why I was saying, without Pat.
Well, but the motion had to be.
But it gets defeated, but because it's a tie, it's defeated.
Okay, okay, I'm good.
So we can.
Thank you for that discussion.
So what this really means is you have time to change your mind?
Something like that, John, something like that.
All right, but I guess the other one is the, the four-year term on the board of selectmen.
Oh, it's.
I don't think so.
Oh, good.
Do we need to make a motion?
You need to make a motion. And this is, again, C three dash four.
I move that the term for the board of, for the board selected before years.
Second. And this would be for both the first selectmen and?
Yeah. Yes.
Because it would alternate.
Yeah. So, all right, and there's second, you said? Yep, okay. Who would like to start the discussion?
I'll do it, since I did it. Dan knows that with a two-year term, and the day that, the day after the election, Dan began thinking about the next election. It is just nature of the beast. It is a huge, they are all, all three, selectmen, select people. Are, it's a huge, huge job. It takes at least a year and a half to get acclimated. And to be constantly worried about having to turn over, and turning over, and turning over for years gives time to get settled into the positions. It gives time to learn the positions, to really understand how the town operates. I am open to listening to any and all conversations about it. I just think it's healthier for the, for the board of selectmen, and quite frankly, I think it's healthier for the town.
Yeah, I have to say, I agree with Penny, there's such a two years, there's such a, it's a huge learning curve. I mean, the minute you get, you, most people, I, I guess you would think, most people who are elected as first elected, have had a lot of experience in the town, have been on various boards and commissions, you would think. But even if, even if they have, they don't know every single department, the procedures of every department, they don't know everything that they need to know about the charter, there's just so much they don't know. And at the same time, yes, they do have to be aware that two years, that they're running for reelection, which is really one year. Re-election, so it's just a constant, you need time to catch your breath and to be able to learn the job. So, but those are the basic reasons, I would say, I would agree with this, four-year term.
Okay, else?
I think every other board and commissioner in the town is four years. And I think you could ask any of the volunteers or anybody in a position that, I mean, like Lisa, for instance, that they really, they really need the four years to affect the kind of positive change that all, everybody goes into this with the intention of making the town a better place. Having only had two years, I mean, I got a lot done in two years, but I sort of felt like I'd hit my stride about a year and a half in. And it takes a long time, and it has become that much more complex in twenty years. What Dan is dealing with on a day-to-day basis is exponentially more than I had to deal with. First, I mean, social media is a large part of it also. But our, our communications department, when I was elected, there was a paper this, that. Now, there, so the short form of this really is four years in sync with the rest of the town. Four years to allow that, that person to get some of their agenda going. And honest to God, to your point about people coming out to vote, if you don't think that person's going to last four years, you're going to work that much harder to get the other person. And, I mean, from, from a political standpoint, which I don't like to bring up, but honestly, if you don't like somebody running for first selectmen, you're going to work harder for the, I mean, so, that's just an aside. I think four years, as Terry mentioned, was, is healthier, it's a rhythm. And I'm all for it, because it's really brutal to run for three years, and you just don't want people thinking about elections, when they should be doing the town's work.
You know, a lot of, when, when this conversation comes up, a lot of people bring up that the planning and zoning have four-year terms and, and the board of finance. The reason that these boards have four-year terms is so that you don't end up with a new board on, on every other municipal election, right? So we, we, we rotate them, so they're separate. So I'm in this year, somebody else is in in two years, so that you never have a clean slate. So the argument of, oh, the board of finance has four years, why shouldn't the selectmen? It's for that pool, so that you don't have a complete new board, right? We've all seen good selectmen, first selectmen, and we've all seen bad ones, and we've all seen ones that we want out sooner than later. You know, back to the whole, it takes a year and a half to get into a stride, you're absolutely right. That's the first year. But if, if a first selectman does a good job, what happens is his record and him doing a good job, you don't have to worry about the election. You just have to do a good job and you'll be reelected.
Not necessarily. We've seen some good people not get reelected, no matter whether it's four or two or whatever. It's just sometimes that's the political reality of that.
Let John finish.
No, I'm almost there, but then, but I, I just hear like, okay, so he has to run a campaign. The President of the United States, and I know that there's three bodies of governing in the United States, but he still has to learn foreign affairs and, and domestic affairs and, and everything. And we give the President of the United States, with three hundred and fifty million people, four years to do the job, to learn the job and do the job, and then be reelected for a second term. I, I just, you know, you have a first selectman that runs for two years, does a good job, gets reelected, and he, and he's governing twenty thousand people. I just, the, the whole argument of, he has to learn the job and, and worry about running a campaign in two years. I'm not sure that that convinces me that we should have a four-year term. But Joan, Joan still has a spoke.
My, is it my turn?
Go next.
Okay, my informal survey, again, the results were mixed. Many people thought, you know, leave things the way they are, everything's working fine. That's a common thread of, of thought that many people have. Others said, well, maybe in this day and age, we need to look at a longer term and keep the person more secure, more stable, in having the four-year term. And maybe we would be able to attract people who are perhaps interested in a longer term. It's, they're not going to have to be looking for another job that soon. On the other hand, there was also, what has been mentioned, the apprehension about having a person in the position who didn't work out, and then being stuck with them supposedly. I like the idea of thinking about, if the person does a good job, they'll get another term. And another term, and another term, because that's, you know, it's happened. We don't have any term limitation for our first selectmen or selectmen. So I'm, I'm a little mixed on this. I think it would be interesting to put this before the vote and see what people think about a four-year term. They may have some interesting ideas about it, and it would be their judgment. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, yeah, Dan.
Okay, so obviously, I think everyone knows kind of where I stand on this, but it gets mixed up, why? Because there's a lot to this. First off, most selectmen on that board out there, or the panel, have been here for four years, they get reelected. So in overall, why waste the time than, you know, playing games with trying to have, you know, two-year terms? They figure out four years whether they're good or bad, or they leave. That's number one. Number two, we talk about the boards, most of them four years, because they're not a new board. Why would you want a new selectman every two years, or new first selectman? Because it's the one thing in the charter that talks about the importance of the first selectman looking long-term at the town. So the, the selectman, the first selectman is the one that's charged to make sure we're actually executing on vision. It's, it's the CEO of the town. So this isn't a political decision so much, it's the actual CEO, and you also want somebody very qualified in that position. But two-year term is not, is not really a great thing to attract somebody to come run for this job. We might get the most, you know, popular dog or the most popular gas station attendant elected, because they're popular. But I think if you have a reasonable amount of time for somebody to step out of the private sector, and a reasonable amount of money for the job, then we're going to attract better candidates. Absence of having a town manager position, I think that is one of the most important things we should be looking at right now. Someday, if we have an administrator or a contractor, whatever, some of the masters of public administration, who can actually do all the complicated things we do, because we are not Mayberry anymore. The level of what we do, you know, communicating with the state, the state rules, and what's happening on a day-to-day basis, then the ability actually run personnel in this building. Somebody having some personnel experience, like, you really want to attract somebody qualified. That is, those are some of the biggest reasons to do this. And then, of course, yes, there's the, the distraction of a campaign every two years. Giving, giving somebody like three years of hard work, and then, you know, to run that fight for the job that last year, I think is really, really worth it. And again, this will be in two thousand twenty-seven, be the first time we do this. Number one, the voters should look at it, because I've had more people that go, that's insane that it's a two-year term. It's silly, especially when the other important boards are four years, and that's why. You don't want to upend, like, you want to give the town a chance to have some vision. And that's the only person who does it. So cutting it out, making, like, one year they're working really, really hard, and the next year they're fighting for their life because of politics. Plus, most of the reason people go down in plans isn't because they're doing a good job or a bad job. If something political happens, where they get somebody, there, it's a mudslinging campaign, you know, it's not this really big thing that somebody's done. And if that happens, well, you know, then there are ways to kind of isolate that first selectmen if they're crazy. The other two first, the other two selectmen can get together and all the votes. I mean, you can isolate somebody who's an idiot. I think giving somebody a four-year shot is so good for the town overall. I may not even be the one to benefit from it, I don't know. It's actually more difficult in two thousand twenty-seven, do I want to stay in the four years? So it's not about me. It really about, it's about the long-term vision for the town, the ability to move the ball forward. And, and at a minimum, I know that people will pass this. There's no doubt in my mind, I get approached by it all the time. It's the right thing to do, and I feel very passionate about it, but obviously, I don't have a vote, just what you said. There's, I can't think of one thing against this, except the quote, we get a bad person in the job. Well, you can't screw it up that much in four years anyway. And I think you have the means to isolate people, because you have all the other boards and commissioners making decisions. You have the board of finance who controls the purse strings, and you got two other selectmen who can outvote that person. Worst case is you're going to have an absentee landlord, somebody who doesn't show up for work. They're not going to, I don't think they're going to screw the place up. But if you don't have any vision, and you don't have people moving the ball forward, and somebody qualified in that position, then you got a problem. This is not Mayberry anymore. This is not the Bethel of twenty years ago, I'm sorry. We do deal with very complicated things, complicated personnel issues. The state, I mean, it is a much different position. And you need a four-year term to really ferret that out, do it right, and, and that'll be the United States.
Can I, before, before I lose my thought, is that all right?
Yeah.
So, so when a, so first selectman wins an election, most of the time, he drags in his under ticket, right? He or she, I'm sorry, the position.
Not always.
Well, but, okay. Okay, in the last ten years, that's typically what's happened.
No, it's not, it doesn't.
It's exactly the opposite, opposite. Top of the ticket, one, you had Republican control of the lower, lower houses.
Okay, this last election, we did pretty well.
No, but, but you were saying, through the years, through the years. Republicans have been having the elected board.
My thought was, if you have a a first selectman that is, and the same party is the majority on the board of finance, in four years, things could go really bad. If they're all working together and it's all political.
You'd have to have a, you'd have to have a chair of the board of finance, who was also not looking to do the right.
Right, if they're playing party lines, things could go bad.
Yeah, it'd be tough, though, because you also have, everything that goes to the board of finance goes to the board of selectmen as a board. And politically, I, listen, I know everybody wants to look at the politics part of it. You know, right now, you know, the Republicans have had a majority of boards in this town. You know, right now, you know, the Republicans have had a majority of boards in this town because the town does lean somewhat middle to conservative, especially fiscally. So I think we've had, you know, majorities for a time. I don't think it really matters the, the top of the ticket so much. Yes, if you're running the top of the ticket, you might have a better chance. And the last time I was running, I was unopposed, so it wasn't really a, a test of what it would be. Uh, but again, this comes down to, you can, you can look at the fear of getting somebody in here who stinks. Or you can look at the overall vision of the town and how complicated it is to try to attract the best person for the job. The, the problem is, when you have a two-year term, it's a lot more difficult for somebody worth their salt to say, I'm gonna leave the, the world of business or whatever it is, and come in and do this. So, no offense to anybody, you get retirees, whether or not they've had any real experience, but, you know, you, I think you want people who come in here. It's a full-time job, they're gonna get full-time to it, they're not gonna, you know, they're, they're giving everything they have for this job. It's an opportunity for their town. I don't feel you get that with a two-year term. And, and, and before the money, we've talked about the money on the Board of Finance. It should be a reasonable amount that's kind of comparable to other towns, which we've done that. So, I mean, it's almost like I'm competing myself out of a job, but it's, it's really the right thing for the town long-term. I, I.
Yeah, but you've kind of won it, Dan. I mean, the thing about it is, is that when you're gonna attract somebody at the level, because we don't have a town manager, and it's very common to lose town stone. You've got to let, you've got to attract someone who doesn't just, um, think that they can do it. It's not a hobby, you really have to have, come in with skills. And at least the last two first selectmen have. Uh, they've come in with, with history and skills, and that's rare. It's tough to find, no matter what party you are, no matter where you're coming from, to find someone willing to take that paycheck, leave the public sector and come in, you've got to give them some kind of job security. So if you want to attract good people, you really have to pay them, and you really have to give them an opportunity not to just turn around and kind of go, oh, well, that didn't work, and then they have no job.
I, I will say this too, if, if the board doesn't, the commission doesn't want to do a four-year term, then let's put a May and put the position in for a town administrator. Now, seriously.
So, but we still have a motion on the table.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that.
That's a very good point.
That's a point. The point is, you should have somebody with a, a master's degree in this stuff.
Okay, so I'll take my turn, but last, last.
Mr. Chair.
Last guy at bat. And, um, and if you look at that, the wall of photos out on the wall, of all the first elect, the past 150 years, the Bethel voters have always given, uh, first elect a second term with two exceptions in 150 years. So Paulson Kowski said. Well, I, I'm, it's my turn. We're not going to agree, and we knew that, you know, that's why we tabled this. Um, so yes, with two exceptions, and I'm not counting Ed Mills, because Ed Mills didn't get the endorsement of his own party. And so, yes, he wasn't given a second term. Um. Matt Nickerbocker was here for, for 14 years or 13 years. So he was real, he was elected and then reelected six times in a row. And, you know, it wasn't, he, he was able to run, he had the, the skills for running, or for running the town, that is. And, um, and then the town people kept reelecting. And actually, he didn't get, the voters didn't vote him out. He went somewhere else and stepped down. Um, and we're fortunate that we have, have Dan now. Um, I don't like the idea of taking away the voter's right to vote on their first elect. Uh, and that each municipal election should have our first selectman at the top of the ticket. But anyway, that's, that's all I have to say. And also, my, my feeling is that in 2019, I wasn't in favor of it, and ended up not going, not being accepted by the previous, uh, board, uh, Charter Revision Commission, that is. And, um, I, you know, I'm not about to say, okay, now I'm in favor of it because my guy is in the first selectman's office. You know, that's, you don't show your integrity by saying, well, then it's a bad idea, but now it's a good idea, right?
Sounds changed though, so you could on base, well, it's up to you.
Yeah, I, I always look back, I wonder what it costs this town. When people, those years weren't working, because everyone gets elected the second time and it's four years, so why bother? Why not give that person three years to really focus all they're doing? And those off-years, they're not worried about campaigning on top of it. I think there's, and again, the attracting people is different now. Like, back then, it wasn't as complicated, you, you know.
It was complicated enough.
Well, it was, yeah, but I know now, it's like, my God, we really should be, if I could put requirements on the job, to say, you know, you gotta have somebody with an advanced degree, or you have, I don't want to take the boy. That's right, so we, but I'm just saying the qualification is so different.
So we've all had our chance to talk, at least once.
I'll shut up, sorry. Let's try.
That's not what he meant.
But I'm talking, I don't wanna. And we'll go ahead and call the vote and see where we land. So, all in favor of expanding to a, a four-year term for the first elect and the Board of Select? Say aye. And those against?
I'm a nay.
Nay. And Joan?
I am an aye, I want to see what the people say.
So, well, that, that would be an aye.
Yep.
She said I'm a nay.
Yep, that's an aye, I want, I'd like to have a vote on it.
Okay, all right, so the motion passes. And, um, yeah, so we have, I think that covers everything. Um, so I think if we could then, Nick, if you could take these recommendations, put them in, make the changes, do your additional research, and then get them back to us. I, my thought was that we could perhaps have a special meeting to go over it, rather than waiting another month, uh, go over it. Because again, the goalpost, we're trying to meet a, a deadline. If we could get on the November ballot, to get on the November ballot, well, of course, absentee ballots aren't, have to be available, um, October 4th, something like that, it's 30 days to be 4th. Um, but then we have to put the questions, the selectmen have to submit the questions, I guess, through the 10/3rd, to the Secretary of State to approve them going on the ballot. Um, so we had, then we'd have to have their decision by September 5th. Right, um, so, you know, Nick, you can take a look and see whether this is all going to be possible.
It is possible, but we've got to react quickly, because we have two public hearings, one of this commission, one of the Board of Selectmen. You also have a publication requirement in the newspaper, which is under a certain timeline, so.
Well, I'm creating the 19th through the 26th, which is two weeks or three weeks from now.
Yeah, let's take a look at it. I, you want to say do the public hearing after the budget public hearing, then that can be crazy long, it can be a mess. Yeah, Mr. Chair.
I, I expect that we're probably gonna have 200 people at the, yeah, at a meeting. Um, so if we have.
Am I moderating that one?
Yeah, you said yes.
Well, okay, let's start with Nick. How, how long do you think it would take you to kind of get the? Um, the draft.
Well, we didn't do the five-person board, I was worried about that one, because that was gonna take some, some drafting.
Yeah.
Not that I was favor or against, but, um, I don't, these changes won't take very long. If I push, I'll, I'll get it to you next week.
Did, and I have a question about the five-person board. It had an impact on the Public Utilities Commission?
It would have had, I think, multiple impacts throughout the chart.
So I, I wasn't sure whether we had already kind of dealt, that was 711A. So, um. But would you say that?
I want to check that, that four, four-year term doesn't have an impact anywhere else as well. Um, but the other changes are more in a cereal, so I don't, I don't think I.
I mean, and then what we've got to do is, once we get that draft, we've got to kind of comb through the entire thing, see if there's anything else. Um.
Yes, I, I want all the members scrutiny on, on all added.
Well, I don't know about Wednesdays are a little tougher, but was Tuesday a problem too for the 18th or 25th?
Which day?
18th, March 18th or, or March 25th?
Um, I know, I have.
I can do either.
Or, or Monday the 17th, Monday the 24th?
I'm not around that one.
No Mondays?
Tuesday, March 18th, I'm in Newington for a hearing at 7:00.
Well, that's not good. 25th? 25th?
20.
I mean, that saves us two weeks, that's.
Good, I'm good for the 25th.
That's three weeks from now. So Joan, we're looking at October, or I'm sorry, March 25th?
On a Tuesday?
Tuesday?
Tuesday the 25th.
Yeah, it's okay.
You won't back yet, right?
No, no.
Okay. And John?
I'm good on the 25th, I can do the 25th.
Okay, let's just say that'll be it.
Same time.
March 25th, and then we're just going to have to figure out, I don't know, um. Mary, can you jump online and see whether this room is available? 7:00 PM?
This is for the public hearing?
No, no, this is, this is our next meeting, to, to kind of approve the final.
And there will be a special, special meeting, so you, you won't, won't no public comment. And just whatever's on the agenda, so consideration of the draft.
Yeah.
Meeting Room A is available on the 25th.
Great, Room A. Okay, so I guess we should do that by motions. Would someone like to make the motion that we're going to meet, have a special meeting on March 25th, 7:00 PM, Meeting Room A? So moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um. So I think that's it. Um, so once Nick gets his, his draft out, then we're gonna have to, each of us individually go through it closely and see if there's anything else to, to think about.
Mr. Chair, did you think it consensus on what they were talking about earlier with the, uh, the 15% vote or town meeting, all that?
Did you? No, we, we'd already talked about it. No, this is just, we, we know.
But I did not want to bring it up to them.
It was a tabled item, I didn't know.
It was ours.
Well.
I'm just saying the.
I think we didn't move forward with it.
Yeah, we did not move forward with it, but I did, I just, I, I wanted to bring it up in case we didn't discuss it.
And with that number of 15%?
No, I just wanted to make sure that you had covered it, because it was.
We wouldn't have made the 15% over the past.
I'm not saying a quarter or anything, I don't, I don't think it's, yeah, but it's in here, it's tabled, that's all I want to mention.
So I just, before we, before we adjourn, I just need to say really quickly, I am a registered Democrat. And if Dan believes as a Republican that we, that the first selectman or the selectman's offices should be four years, as long as it is a qualified person, I don't care what party that per, I do care what party that person is. But it needs to be a qualified person. And I have a lot of respect for what this man who walked in to this situation. We also need to remember that over a group of years, Matt went back to school and got a master's in, I think, public administration.
Yes.
That's a huge thing for people to take on as an older student, working a full-time job. That's a lot to ask of somebody. So what I think we, I think I can safely say that for me, it is really a nonpartisan issue. It really is. Would I prefer that Dan, you know, switched affiliations and became a Democrat?
Of course, of course I would.
However, it's not partisan for me. It really isn't, it's the job.
And Matt used to be a Republican. There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Who he used to be?
Matt Nickerbocker.
Oh, I know. You know, I was married to a Republican for 25 years.
You know.
I mean, those, those things happen.
For, for me, this is completely non, non partisan.
You can always save the soul.
Right, and appreciating the idea that we have a first selectman who sees what's going on in the town, like, really understands what's happening.
Well, I'm also looking back at 2019, the previous Charter Revision Commission.
Sure.
There was a public hearing, and many, many, many people got up and supported the four-year term on the Board of Select. All those people are still in town, they didn't go back.
Right, why don't they support it now?
And it's.
We'll see what happens this time.
No, it's, it's a different town now, it's really. No, no, no.
No, no, no.
I'm talking about, basically.
While Matt Nickerbocker was the first selectman, there was rows of town committee members that sat here and told you and I, Terry, that I agree, we need a four-year term. Now, all of a sudden, it's a Republican in the front office. I don't see those same people insisting that we make that change this year, just like we did four years.
Okay, hang, hang on, hang on one second. First of all, I am all about communication. I'm all about people need to know, I don't care if it goes 300 times on Facebook, whether it's Justin's page or whatever that other Bethel page exists, um, or wherever it is under, you know, whatever. I am all about communication, which Dan does a phenomenal job on. However, I don't know that people know what is going on in this room.
Right, they don't know what's gonna be.
I don't think they.
The town committees know.
Town committees.
Right.
The town committees know what's going on. But it's, again, I mean, I don't want to drag this down.
But the town committee, but the town committees are, for the most part, Republican-dominated. So, so you can't.
The town committees, you have 25 Democrats, it's like we have 25 Republicans.
Wait, wait, wait.
Democratic town committee, Republican town.
20 years ago, people were staying home with their children. Now, two people in a family work.
We're talking about 2019.
I'm talking five, four years ago.
Okay, I'm just simply saying that I don't think that it is a partisan thing. I really don't think so.
Then why aren't those same 25 people sitting in these chairs insisting that we do it?
Because I don't think people know that tonight was going to be a vote on this issue.
Those 25 people were from the town committees, that's what I'm talking.
And they haven't been here for four months.
But anyway, I mean, the vote has already been taken.
I'm just, I just want to make it really clear that for me personally, I don't speak for anybody else, that particular issue, as most of these issues, it's not a partisan deal.
And you would have supported it four years ago, right?
Absolutely.
So, so just for you to support it now shows integrity. Right, it was a good idea then, it's a good idea now.
Yeah, Alison, I do.
So, I, I mean, I don't know, how, Terry, you voted?
I voted for it.
Okay, so.
Absolutely.
Anyway, so again, that's, that's it. So I applaud you for integrity.
You don't need to do that, I just wanted to.
I will.
Oh, you know, so anyhow, I'll take it.
I will do this.
And I need.
Forty years ago, I would have voted against it.
Before this goes off the rails completely, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Joan.
Joan.
We'll have one more online, and then we'll see, we'll see in April.
We had rain today.